We gave you a, oh, okay.
The board concluded our executive session at six twenty P M. And there was no action taken during the executive session. I would like to call to order the regular C S D board meeting for August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two at six thirty-two P M. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to join us in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. We're all, everyone who's able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have two students from Decatur High School who will lead us in the. No anthem, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. That was beautiful. Thank you all for joining us.
I may say, they pitched down for this room. I have seen them fill with higher on the corner. Lovely.
Yes, thank you all. All right, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening?
Uh, yes. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm going to request that we move the budget amendment to the discussion item section instead of the action item section.
All right. So may I have a motion to move the budget item, the budget to the discussion section instead of the action section?
Move to move the budget amendment to the discussion section instead of the action section.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And Madam Chair, can you just explain or superintendent what that means?
Uh, yes, so I will give an overview when we get to that discussion. Uh, we've got some more looking into with the budget and I'm going to outline what that is. But um, it's not that it's a not, not going to happen, it's not now, it's, we're going to extend the runway for that a little bit.
That's okay.
And I'll go through more details when we get to that section.
Thank you. Any other revisions to the agenda? All right, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor for the approving the agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda for this evening is approved. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting and the joint work session from the city of Decatur. The joint work session with the city of Decatur, I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the July board meeting and the joint work session with the city of Decatur?
Motion to approve the July work session and the joint meeting with the city of Decatur.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the July board meeting and the joint work session with the city of Decatur, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The minutes for the July meeting and the joint work session with the city of Decatur are approved. The Decatur Career Correct Academy is our spotlight this evening. Welcome, Mr. Spruill.
Good evening, Board. Uh, Dr. Furman, thank you for having us here today. Um, I'm super excited and have been looking forward to this. Um, so with may I have Mr. Coolnay, he's going to come up and speak shortly. Miss Smiley, our working coordinator, fresh off of Top Gun training. And Mae, we'll leave her back there as she rolls her stuff up, uh, shortly. So we'll try to keep it to that ten-minute window for everybody and then a lot of questions at the end. So first of all, some of our highlights from, uh, last school year. Uh, we did receive our Career Academy certification. The actual date when we actually will get our certificate and, and the ceremonies in Jones, is at Jones County, uh, Career College and Career Academy on September twenty-ninth. We got that word yesterday. Um, also had a monitor and risk assessment last year that went over very well. Uh, I want to give a special shout out for the monitor risk assessment to our, to our, um, teachers and. Athena and to Anita for their help in making that run smoothly when they, you know, they were on the spot with some questions and they were able to come through for us. Um, uh, our Top Gun award winner, uh, Kiss Smiley, there's only about thirty or so teachers from around the state each year they get awards with this. And I got to give a special thanks to Dr. Furman because she, uh, she funded this. Uh, there was in the budget in one of those boxes on that Google forum set, will you pay for your teacher to come if she's selected? And, uh, Dr. Furman agreed to that. So thank you for that, Dr. Furman. I mean, I'll let Miss Smiley talk about Top Gun a little bit more shortly. Um, we had a hundred and twenty-nine students pass the end of pathway assessment. So much like our, uh, in the course test, we have an end of pathway. Students complete three years of a pathway and then they set for. It is down to sixty-five percent. It usually is around seventy-five to eighty percent. So we're trying to work on that and get it back up during the pandemic. But one positive about that is that we had forty-eight students that received Adobe certification, which is, which is recognized by the industry. And I actually seen Ben here and Ben, who was one of the students, he emailed me and he had his, 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 uh, tag at the bottom of his, his signature in, in the Gmail account that shows his certification. So we had forty-eight students, about one twenty-nine, that earned what we call industry-recognized certification, which is far above what the state requires, but it, it's recognized by industry-wide and that's in architecture and graphics. Uh, seventeen students completed the early, the summer early college program, you know, against one of our equity initiatives to make sure that our, our, uh, our black students are getting an opportunity to, for doing enrollment at Georgia State University. And everybody started, finished, so that's a good thing. And then, uh, we have a silver award winner and I'll let her talk about her experience and those students' experience once he comes up, uh, uh, in San Diego this summer along with her teachers. Uh, and then we had two teachers, computer science certified, one at Beacon Hill Middle School and one at Decatur High School, Ms. Pierce and Ms. Bolton. And that is one of the state initiatives that we offer computer science curriculum at different levels, you know, courses at the high school, opportunities at the middle school and opportunities at, at elementary school. So we're getting there with that. But that's, that's a big step for us. And I was so excited, I emailed everybody real fast and they, they both like within a day said, I passed, I finished. So. Uh, this is a comment from Kathy Morris, one of our, uh, visitors. And so the Career Academy visit is based on technical college system, a Georgia company that evaluates Career Academy, whereas the monitor risk assessment is the C T E, uh, department from the D O E coming in. This was her, her, uh, statement about the, about the visit. When I say all stakeholder groups from our S L T advisory committee, board member came and, and, uh, he, uh, and, and showed out, um, our parents, we had, uh, alumni came back, uh, via Zoom and interviewed with our current students. It was just a great experience and, and they really enjoyed our Career Academy. And the biggest thing that touched me about that visit was that, uh, our reviewer Frank, he's, he's, he's an old, you know, he's a good old boy, uh, from Rome. And he said to me, um, we know Decatur's different, but you're doing really good things. So that was, uh, that was like the most touching moment I had. What's new with the Career Academy? Uh, we're finalizing our D two partnership and that's Decatur and Drew Charter. And, uh, this came about because we always struggle with having enough students in a particular program for the college to run it as a dual enrollment program. You have to have ten. And, um, as you know, you know, just like us, killer creatures that have anything new that lives in heaven, try. We partnered with two programs with Drew Charter. One would be hosted at the Emory Nurses School in downtown Decatur, which is brand new. Um, and it wasn't. Discount, but to use a facility and our students to be able to go over there and be in that environment with special nurses on a daily basis to get that certification. And then early childhood education, um, at the college. Then, uh, Ms. Pierce, one of our, uh, computer science teachers, applied for and received the Amazon Future Engineering Grant. And, uh, that will include field reps, curriculum and, uh, resources for our students. So that's kind of what's coming up in this school year. All right, I'm going to turn to our S L T member to talk about his experience with the Career Academy.
Exactly. Thank you very much, everybody. Good to see everyone again. Uh, welcome back, uh, from, so. So last year, um, I reached out to Mr. Spruill. I have some relationships at the Georgia People Technical College. And I think you guys are the big advocate of, uh, career or not. And I, I was able to organize a student visit, um, to the Technical College and, uh, members of the school, uh. Who else?
Ms. Young.
Ms. Young, yeah, yeah, Ms. Young went with us. And then we, we, uh, we went with the students there, uh, and they took us around the, the campus and just wonderful programs. I think I may have spoken about it here. Um, audio engineering, they've got, uh, the machi, uh, mechanical auto repair, just, just so many phenomenal things going on there, I think, our students. I'm glad that we continue to support them. So thank you to the board for continuing to support the career pathways. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And again, Dr. Furman, thank you so much for sending me to, uh, for giving me that opportunity to go to the Top Gun training, um, when really that should have been for the students. If you look at the numbers, our students are doing phenomenal. Um, I did put the dollar amount here collectively, a hundred and five students, um, earned a lot of money, but more importantly, even with those who were un, uh, unpaid, our students worked the collective, um, twenty thousand hours. And that's in part due to the partnerships within the school district. We were able to have students work in different departments, nutrition is onboarding, um, this year. But we have several students in Milton, we have students in Courtney, so I'm appreciative of all those things. And so all of that is why Decatur's work-based learning program is Top Gun. We had a record-breaking economic year. Um, and you see the economic impact there. Another big thing is that we got twelve new employees to join us as official business partners. So this is above and beyond our students coming back saying, hey, Miss Smiley, I'm working at X Y Z. These are partnerships that we've been able to, um, secure over the course of several years and they are now asking for students on a regular basis. Okay? We also were able to, um, this has been long coming, as part of our equity initiative, offer job shadowing opportunities to those students who just don't have the space for whatever reason in their daily schedule to participate in work-based learning. In this first cohort, we had students shadowing, we had about ten students with the school, shadowing our, um, maintenance department. And they went every Friday, shadowing different, um, areas in the maintenance department that worked really well. We plan to do that again this spring. Some of the opportunities that we saw, um, and said, and go for ourselves this year to secure more architecture and computer science partnerships because those two pathways have grown tremendously. So we would definitely like a business, I don't know if I'm. Those two programs are turning out kids who are certified, uh, and ready to go and have some type of impact in that workplace. So we're, we're definitely looking to grow those areas. We want to have more shadowing opportunities in other departments in this district. And then finally, one of my biggest goals is to host a spring hiring event for interns, um, summer jobs. That way, all of our students are placed before we leave and, um, make a larger impact in this. And then, I don't know if you were able to see this, I did put a little more information up there, uh, with some numbers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mitted Gallantine and I'm a junior at Decatur High School. At the beginning of my sophomore year, I decided to join a club called S C C L A, which stands for Family Career Community Leaders of America. Um, S C C L A is a national club that gives many students just like me opportunities and, um, events to choose from to compete in. I chose fashion construction where I was able to design, sew and create my own pattern for the structured bodice and fully, um, bottom evening gown. Um, this dress took me to regionals of where I placed gold and got the opportunity to represent Decatur in, um, the Georgia State Competition. Um, I was able to travel with my amazing teachers, Ms. Black and Michelle Cos. And it was amazing, I did so many experiences and I ended up winning both. Got to represent Decatur and the whole entire state of Georgia. Conference and all the way from San Diego, California. I had so many amazing memories and I ended up placing silver and winning a brand new sewing machine. L A has given me amazing opportunities for my future and amazing memories. I've become a better community member, leader, and definitely a better public speaker. I can't wait to spend the next two years engaged in this club and I'm excited to be a part of it. Thank you.
I will leave it at that. Thank you all very much. You have any questions?
No questions, but just thank you for all that you do. Congratulations to Mae. Um, and my son had all, my youngest son had all of these experiences. He had the Adobe certification, he was in the work-based learning program, he was even a member of S C C L A. So I, I know firsthand the, uh, benefits of those experiences, so thank you.
Thank you. You let fifty-year-olds sign up?
Uh, and I just wanted to also share my support for the College and Career Academy at Decatur High School. Um, I've been working with Mr. Spruill for several years and his passion and dedication to the program as well as his staff is second to none. It's an amazing program. They do really great work and I'm always happy to support that program because I believe that our Career Academy will be created, will be helping train our students for their tomorrow and the jobs that aren't even invented yet. So thank you guys for that. And, um, I think someone may just sign up for Project Runway, that's my favorite show.
Thank you. At this time, we will move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the community signed up for public comment?
Yes, we have several in person. Um, we also have an email that is going to be read into the, um, record and then we have one person on Zoom. So let's start with the email that was, um, sent and we will read that onto record.
Hey, um, we were, we were requested to add this to the record by, um, community member, Richard Malerba. I'm prompted to write due to a thread on Nextdoor. I read some very concerning things regarding proposed budget amendments. It seems that some information that appears to be factually incorrect is prompting an outcry from citizens across Decatur. One such point was that the budget represents a seventeen million dollar increase over the past three years, which as you know, is not the case. I believe that figures from five budget schedules. Other information about the district comparisons in the amendment, I also believe, were not on point. I am concerned with the line of thinking that the math that was presented in the comparison illustrated an overspending in C S D for students. My read of the amendment is that comparable schools of approximate size and scope were selected and not the money spent for students. It is difficult to compare City Schools of Decatur to other regional districts on this point because it is so unique. It is one of the reasons so many folks have moved here through the years. However, I hope to clarify my position somewhat. I believe the question of comparability is in the percentage increase within each district. During very trying times, C S D did commendable job keeping costs down in an adverse environment. C S D had a three-point-five percent increase compared with six-point-five to upward to ten-point-five in other districts. With inflation running near ten percent, I am quite amazed that the proposed budget isn't even higher. As far as the discrepancy between our district and the others on a student basis, there are many factors. I'm sure on the face it would be location. If cost of living indexes were applied, it might give us a better picture. Then again, each district has its unique challenges and so that approach is far from perfect. If the board is concerned about the expenditures per student, then perhaps the line-by-line audit of the other district's budgets would be revealing. I imagine you will find lower facility costs as well as salaries in general, as well as indicating the post I read, the Marietta system is closest to us in overall expenditures. This will make sense since Marietta has the more expensive cost of living of the other two mentioned areas. It should be noted that with the economy of scale of Marietta, eight thousand plus students enrolled, over fifty-five percent more than C S D, it is not surprising the costs are lower per student. Adjusting for COLA and the economy of scale, looks like we are more, most likely far better than Marietta and our poor people expenditure. Comments about teacher salaries and exceptional benefits were also made. While I believe C S D does a good job of offering teachers competitive pay, I do not believe that they are overpaid, especially in this inflationary environment and the expense of living in or commuting to Decatur. I mention these items because I'm sure you'll hear about it tomorrow if you have not already. In conclusion, I am unequivocally expressing my support of the budget as amended proposed by the superintendent and CFO. I also fully support the expenditure, three million dollars of lost money for the track and field. I believe that deal with the city will provide our middle and high schools with badly needed facilities for basically half the cost. It is a win-win. I appreciate all you do. C S D striving to be the best it can be. That is not an inexpensive endeavor. Thanks for this time. Time regards, Richard Malerba.
Thank you.
I forgot to have you.
No, that's okay. So at this time, I'm going to read a statement from our board policy manual. This serves as a reminder for all speakers and members of the audience. The opportunity. Public comment is limited to. Residents, residents, employees, businesses and organizations. Persons wishing to address the board during public comment must sign in before the public comment period begins and in doing so will be asked to state their connection to C S D and/or the city of Decatur. To allow time for the board's other business, public comment will ordinarily be limited to one hour or twenty speakers. At the board's discretion, the comment period may be extended for a specified amount of time or a specific number of additional speakers. The time limit for all speakers will be three minutes. Persons speaking during public comment will not be permitted to yield the floor or transfer unused time to other speakers. Comments during public comments should be addressed to the board as a body and not to individual members. At the chair's discretion, persons violating this policy may be asked to step down. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Speakers are not to list complaints about specific personnel or individuals connected with the district in a public session. The board will not allow abusive language, threats, comments, jeers, applause or shouts from the floor. Disruptive persons will be asked to leave the meeting room. The chair may terminate public comments that are profane, vulgar, defamatory or disruptive. Speakers may not address confidential student or personnel matters but may submit such concerns to the superintendent in writing. Members of the board will not address persons presenting public comment or speak to the substance of any comments made during public comment. However, a member of the administrative team will follow up with persons speaking at the board meeting. Dr. Furman, would you please call our first speaker?
Yes. Um, let's start with our Zoom speaker. This is Hobie Stocking.
Thank you. Um, as you've mentioned, my name is Hobie Stocking. I'm a resident of Decatur and I also lead a citizen advocacy clean energy group called Decatur One Hundred. And I imagine that you've got many challenges, so thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I wanted to add one more challenge to your plate and it deals with student health and our students' future. And that is the issue of electrifying our school bus fleet. I want to underscore a couple of reasons and some of the things you may not know about our current diesel school buses. The first is the impact of diesel on the health of our students. Diesel buses emit a very fine particles of carbon and a toxic mixture of gases, including benzene, which is known to cause cancer. According to dozens of studies, the air inside the bus is ten times worse than the air outside. And over a twelve-year school career, this is ninety days of twenty-four hours a day of exposure for our students. A recent Georgia State study links diesel fumes to lower test scores. And I don't imagine switching to electric buses will get kids to skip two grades, but it can't hurt. Other studies link diesel fumes to increased asthma rates and we all know what's going on in that area. So I am assured by one board member that we are beginning to look at this, that we've applied for a federal grant for one bus. And as a reminder, the Department of Transportation fund of five billion dollars is available, but grants have to be submitted by August nineteenth. Tonight, I wanted to challenge all of us, challenge you by asking that you consider not the minimum goal of one bus, but what is possible? There are plenty of studies around and what might be new to us is not new to others and we can leverage that knowledge. The city in which I was born and lived until four years ago just applied for funding for twenty-five buses. Second, I'd like the board to develop a plan that gets us to electrify our bus fleet by two thousand and thirty. And I know putting a plan like that together, uh, might take some time, but I think it's a, a worthy goal to have and would like to see some action in that area. And I know each and every program has demands and we tend to look at things like this as costs, but I want us to begin to look at this as an investment, an investment in our students' health and our students' future. And looking back, I believe our students will thank you. They're going to ask, how did you have the wisdom, the courage and the foresight to not only give us the best education, but also care for our health and future in the process? Uh, thank you and let me know how I can help.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is in person, Beth Barnes.
Barnes.
Barnes, sorry about that.
So I'm Beth Barnes and my husband Henry and I have lived at ten-ten Clermont here in Decatur for over thirty-three years. Our three daughters attended schools here and now we have a grandson who started in kindergarten and he's at Beacon Hill Middle School now. I'm also president of our neighborhood association, Clermont Gateway, and acting president of the Clermont Garden Club. My neighbors and I want to know why, if the city rolled back the millage rate, the school system did not to keep our taxes down? And exactly where are you spending the approximate four-point-five million overage from last year? Since the tax digest is increasing at a rate that far exceeds the rise in income for many Decatur homeowners, without a reduction in the millage rate and the spend, and the overspending by C S D, more people will be taxed out of their homes. For all the increase in spending by C S D, we've not seen any real increase in performance in our students. And it appears that maybe our central office is very top-heavy. We, the Decatur taxpayers, remind all of you that you do work for us and we expect to have a superintendent with extensive budget knowledge and experience and a school board who reins in the out-of-control spending and sticks to the budget, all the while keeping our taxes down. We are not an endless money pit and we're pretty much done.
Thank you.
Next is Amanda Jolly.
Thank you and good evening to all of you. My name is Amanda Jolly. My husband Dale and I live at nine forty-one Clermont Avenue since May nineteen ninety-five, when we moved from East Atlanta with our infant daughter. We were excited to find a home in a neighborhood with a reputation for amazing schools. Our daughter began her school career at Westchester in the kindergarten class. She graduated from Decatur High School in May two thousand and thirteen. She was active in band through middle school and partway through high school. We were present for all of her school performances, but working full-time, we didn't take the time to be as involved in P T A and other school-related activities as we should have. Shame on us for that. Except for a couple of teachers with whom she had problems connecting, our experience with Decatur City School System was extremely positive and we felt our daughter was exposed to things that interested her, had great teachers and was well-adapted and prepared for college. All in all, Decatur City Schools excelled at what we hoped, had hoped for and had come to expect when we purchased a home here. Living in Decatur for these many years, we've appreciated our ever-increasing home values and the fact that people are interested in. However, we all recognize the tax liability. however, we all recognize the tax liability associated with those increasing values. Over the past few years, it seemed our taxes were increasing at an alarming rate, due in part to the increased value of our home, but upon further investigation, it was obvious that the bulk of those expenses were and are tied to the school system. At first, we chalked it up to the reality that we were, in fact, paying for a benefit we no longer received. That feeling lasted a couple of years, but after the reality wore off, we started paying attention to neighborhoods buzz and reading more Decaturish articles. We realized we weren't the only ones who were recognizing the increases and were likewise concerned. It was revealed that many of the costs were being generated by the prior superintendent himself and expenses he was charged with overseeing. These expenses had very little to do with the core responsibility of educating our children, increasing school performance, or for the benefit of the teachers. School board, rather than taking him to task, enabled him, at least from our perspective. Frankly, we all knew thoughts were mismanaged and directed. Misdirected. That was abundantly clear to all of us in this room. If not, please read some of those old Decatur articles. Furthermore, a pet peeve that we and others share was the profound lack of communication. Superintendent was offensive and cavalier, disgustingly his dismissive attitude and the opaqueness of his office spilled over to a few school board members who seemed more interested in finding a way to justify their own ineffectiveness rather than be responsible and stand up for the nonsense. Dale and I are in the twilight zone of Decatur taxpayers. We no longer have a school-aged child whose presence impacts the school system and yet are too young to benefit from any school tax exemption. As fully burdened taxpayers, we are asking you, the school board, and superintendent Furman to underscore and reaffirm your commitment to be willing to do what it takes to respect the administrators. Sadly, some of the issues, particularly runaway costs that impact the school budget, appear to be holdovers from the last administration. Lessons have not been learned. I guess I'm out of time. So thank you all for your attention. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Uh, up next is Sally Ann Coleman King.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sally Ann Coleman King, and I'm a resident of City of Decatur and a parent of two children in CSD. I've heard many parents come forward over the past several months to share their stories, and I felt compelled to share ours in the hopes that it will clarify that there are systemic issues within the CSD special education process that need to be addressed. Um, my son was diagnosed with dyslexia in the third grade. He got some minimal school support for a few months, but as we watched him struggle, it was just horrifying. Um, he became a shell himself, and we felt totally hopeless and helpless. The boy who once had big dreams suddenly was falling apart in front of our eyes. His standardized test scores fell dramatically. He was suddenly having a hard time at school, and he was acting out just out of absolute frustration. His love for learning and his first school, it just evaporated overnight. But he wasn't failing enough to get much school support. We had gotten psychoeducational testing, and after being provided his dyslexia diagnosis, we began searching for help. I just to say that we were very fortunate. Our school did agree that we could take him out of school for two hours every day and rush up to school, grab him, take him all the way across town to learn anything we felt were huge or due services and intensive remediation for three hours a day, four days a week, a cost of about thirty thousand dollars. Really hard to get him to a better place for third grade. We had a five-o-four plan, but it was generally of minimal support and really focused on executive function, and it was something not enough. We survived elementary school and then had our five-o-four meeting at Faze, where many of these small items for a five-o-four plan were taken away against our wishes. They gave the reasoning that he was doing, I don't know. He continued tutoring at this time, two to three times a week, and received summer booth programs for dyslexia all the way through to fifth grade. When we started Beacon Hill, it was time to renew his five-o-four, and at our first meeting, they suddenly declared him ineligible for a five-o-four. I happened that we were in the middle of pandemic, and I was doing all of the support. He was doing all of the schooling remotely. He'd never even met his teachers, and I just lost it. I started sending emails to everyone I could find detailing all the additional support he was receiving, the additional tutoring at home, and I started joining groups of families who are unfortunately having similar issues with CSD. Um, I then began talking to attorneys. And then suddenly, my case was reconsidered, and I'm not entirely sure what um, I'm a physician, and I'm physically capable of advocating for my children. It was incredibly hard. The meetings, the terminology, the rules for the schools, the five-o-four plans, it was disneying, and I can't even contemplate how parents with less support can jump through all of the hurdles to get support. It's been a struggle, but we've been incredibly lucky. Um, he responded well to remediation. He's maintained strong academic performance and standing. And even more important, importantly, he regained his confidence and his love for learning. I'm certain that if things had gone differently, it would have meant that we left the school system because he was absolutely not getting what he needed to be successful. Even though we've been lucky, I remain haunted by the fact that there are so many other students within the school system who aren't as lucky as we were. And the fact that this process and these children's futures should not be relying on luck. And I'm gonna make sure my story. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, Megan Swingle.
Hello, again.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Megan Swingle, a CSD parent and a state school parent of three boys, ages ten, eleven, and twelve, one of whom starts school tomorrow. I'm gonna have to duck out. Um, right after I leave comments. Uh, over the past several months, we've heard from many parents at board meetings and via an open letter signed by hundreds of CSD families expressing our concerns about CSD's ARC Core Tier One reading instruction. We've also shared our dismay that so many Decatur families are spending thousands of dollars for private tutoring or outright leaving our district after being unable to secure appropriate evidence-based interventions and special education support for our children with dyslexia. We want to sincerely thank Dr. Furman for taking the time over the past two months to meet individually with many of the parents who have shared these concerns, even over July's vacation break. We want to continue to work with the district collaboratively to improve outcomes for all students. To summarize some of our discussions in these meetings, we shared in more detail our concerns regarding the three-quing balanced literacy lessons that are common in ARC Core. We shared several examples of three-quing lessons in current ARC Core materials and discussed why this method of teaching reading is harmful and reinforces guessing words, not decoding them. We dispelled the misperception that parents are asking for a phonics-only approach and clarified that the evidence-based structured literacy approach we are advocating for would be inclusive of all five central elements of reading instruction, which are phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary fluency, and comprehension. We shared our stories of being denied special education services for our children while spending thousands of dollars on tutoring to make up for what our schools have been unable or unwilling to provide. We've told the stories of far too many families who have left the district completely to find the support our children need after being denied five-o-four or IEP special education services. We've expressed our desire to see CSD embrace our neurodiverse children and find a better way to work with parents to make sure we're providing a free and appropriate publication, public education to all. We shared Gwinnett's comprehensive literacy plan to train all administrators, K through five reading teachers, and special education teachers in Orton, Gillingham, and Flanders, and fully align their classroom instruction practices with the science of reading. We express our belief that if the largest school district in the state, as well as school districts closer to our size like City Schools and Marietta, can make these transformative commitments to evidence-based staff training and classroom practices, we're confident CSD can do the same. Throughout the course of these meetings, we have felt very encouraged that our concerns have been heard and acknowledged as valid and that the district has committed to continuing to engage and work with parent stakeholders on these issues of such tremendous consequence for our children. Going forward, we would like to keep working together with CSD to improve literacy outcomes for all students. Specifically, we would like to see CSD develop a comprehensive plan for improving literacy outcomes for all students, including timelines for fully adopting evidence-based reading programs and providing letters and OG training for all administrators, K through five reading teachers, and special education staff. Secondly, we would like the district to form a task force made up of parents, educators, and administration officials to look more closely at the special education process and develop recommendations on how the district can better support families who are going through this process. Families should not have to hire costly advocates or attorneys to ensure their child's right to face a free and appropriate public education as outlined by the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act. Thank you again, Dr. Furman, for taking the time to meet with us and for your commitment to working with parents in the strategic planning process. We look forward to continuing to make progress together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have one more, Mr. Michael Black.
Thank you, commissioners and superintendent, for letting me speak. Uh, I'm Michael Black, a CSD parent and Decatur resident. Uh, I'm here with the IB learner principal at Risk Taker, as I much prefer to be in the background getting things done and not presenting publicly in front of others. The urgency of climate change requires that I be a risk taker. Uh, I've been working to help the city and our school system to act in accordance with the urgency of the climate change represent. We, as a school system, have to act quickly. We've already started actions to address this by building the lead standards as the city requires, maximizing the space, the buildings we have, uh, lighting retrofits, solar installations at Beacon Hill and Tally Middle Schools. We've also looked at roofs to need replacing and possibly putting solar on those roofs when they replace. We've also installed electric vehicle chargers. I've also heard, as you heard earlier from Hoby, that we are applying for an electric bus grant. Unfortunately, for the scale of the problem, none of these will meet the challenge. We need to do more. Uh, where we are is nowhere near where we need to be. The best scientists in the world using the best data that we have have told us we need to reduce our emissions by forty-five percent from two thousand and five levels by twenty thirty. That gives us eight years. Uh, that's a tight time window. That is when our current fourth graders will graduate from high school. But CSD has proven again and again that we're up to the task. The City of Decatur has set its goals in draft form for addressing climate change and made a climate resilience plan. We in the city's school system need to do the same and work in partnership with them. Over the last thirty years, Decatur residents experienced an average of twenty days above ninety-five degrees Fahrenheit yearly. That is expected to increase to ninety days by twenty fifty. That's almost a quarter of the year above ninety-five degrees Fahrenheit. As an example of those who will be impacted by that, you have students walking and biking to school and all of our students in athletic and band programs practicing and competing outside, all impacted by the extreme heat events that are increased by climate change. The number of students is far more than the population that's going to benefit from the three million where in part because everyone using that track at Legacy will also be impacted by the extreme heat. I'm not saying we can't have the track at Legacy and address climate change, but I do think we need to make sure that the investment to address climate change is on your radar and that we're planning for it since we only have eight years. This is also an equity issue, and we have to address things quickly, but also mindfully with equity in mind. Among Decatur households close to considered severely energy burdened, nearly eight hundred households north of West Howard Ave and East College Ave already experience severe energy burdens. Climate change is in the curriculum in our schools, but not at the level that it should be to address the issue and not with the solutions that students should need to know that can be implemented. Many students don't recognize the urgency of the issue, and others are anxious because they don't think we're going to be able to meet the challenge. There is hope among others of our students. Almost forty high school students canvass to get feedback and develop things in the Decatur Clean Energy Plan, and many more middle and high schoolers help push the city to address climate change and make a resilience and climate action plan with the city's twenty-twenty ten-year strategic plan. With congressional allocations to address climate change, there are likely funding opportunities coming near term, not just this electric bus, but other ones. And we should prepare for those and take advantage of those, not to mention funding by foundations to address climate change. Just writing these grants takes lots of people power, never mind the on-the- there will need to be done. Scale of climate change and its threats are too much for Sergio and his staff to address in the time we have remaining. It's going to require all of us. The more we do early on as leaders, the better prepared and the less we'll have to spend when the urgency becomes greater. More importantly, we model and fix the problem that our generation created and protect our children and inequity the children of the world that we are responsible for, uh, to protect them from the worst effects of climate change on their future. We can do this, and we need to. I'm solely here to prompt your continued thinking and urge your prioritization in addressing climate change in everything we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes, um, people that have signed up for public comment.
Okay. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman for superintendent's comment.
All right, well, welcome. Um, good to see everyone, welcome board members, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, um, members of Cabinet, members of the public, thank you for being here this evening. I'm gonna go through some announcements and some updates. First, I would like to commend the CSD staff for a great start to the school year. I met with principals on Friday, and they shared that it was one of the smoothest starts to the school year that they could remember. This is a huge shout-out to all CSD staff for making things happen for our students. We know that a smooth start to the school year will help our students be ready for learning, and I want to thank all of our staff, all of our operations people, buses, nutrition, nurses, teachers, parapros, every single group of employees for making that smooth start happen. I also want to commend all of our schools and departments for making opening day one of the best opening days ever. Each school and department shared their school spirit, their department spirit loud and proud. Congratulations to Claremont Elementary for winning the Spirit Stick back from Ms. Newton Scott and her fave Falcons. It was great to be back in person after two years of COVID, COVID, um, opening for opening day. At opening day, I challenged all CSD staff to identify their why, why they get out of bed every day to teach the students in our community. So just a reminder to all the staff that you have homework, and don't be surprised if the next time I see you, I ask you about your why. I also shared that our theme for this year is to energize, uh, sorry, to engage, energize, and empower all stakeholders. I believe that when we invite our stakeholders to join the conversation, and we are deliberate in bringing a diverse group of stakeholders, that we can find the answer to any problem facing our community. And since I believe we are playing the long game, we need to be energized, encouraged, and inspired to keep going. Whether through recognition, celebrations, or just pats on the back, I want to make sure that all of our stakeholders have the energy to sustain the work that is ahead of us. And finally, I am empowering all stakeholders, all stakeholders to be decision-makers. As I mentioned at opening day, a great leader once told me that you, that you need to know when to get out of the way, and I'm gonna move to the sidelines and be the coach and the cheerleader for our staff, our students, our families, and community partners as they support CSD in achieving our goals. Um, so it was interesting that, um, Ms. Swingle was here this evening to speak because I did want to also reflect on, um, the conversations that I had with the parents over the summer. Um, so over the summer, I did schedule follow-ups with the parents that had spoken over, um, at the board meetings about their concerns with readings and interventions. Um, and it was just a great time over the summer to meet with them, to hear their individual stories. And I was able to take my armor off, as Brene Brown says, and really listen and learn from these parents and hear about their experiences. I, and throughout, even though I enjoyed, oh, sorry. Throughout, I enjoyed meeting with each parent, uh, that I met with. I took away several key learnings to further improve the learning experiences and outcomes for our students, not just in reading, but with our intervention programs and how we support students the whole way through their learning process. I encouraged, um, I followed up with Dr. Beam and her team to share these key takeaways. We've had follow-up meetings with several of these parents, and I am really encouraging us as a school system to partner with these parents who have great, who have a great deal of expertise and experience to share. Um, also, as I mentioned, uh, our reading program starts about supports for students. Okay, so we are starting another year with COVID impacting our schools. And as I shared in the Friday's follow-up, CSD will be using the mitigation plans from the CDC. I've been hearing that the CDC is about to announce some new changes for school mitigation plans, and as those are released, CSD will adjust our plans accordingly. I have received very, uh, several emails from parents about their desire to eat lunch outdoors. I've reviewed the CDC guidelines, and I can find no language in their guidance about requiring outdoor lunch. So along that, along with the heat index during lunch, I believe that this is not a time to have our students eat lunch outdoors. Parents that have concerns can contact their principal and make some individual accommodations for their students, uh, but at this time, we will not be implementing outdoor lunch as a school system. And the last thing I wanted to talk about for this is, um, if you hadn't heard, our principal, Ms. Fra- Ms. Fraser, left CSD over the summer for an amazing opportunity to continue her equity leadership work with EL Education. While we will miss Ms. Fraser immensely and wish her luck in her journey, we are sad that she is not with us anymore. We're going to be looking for her full-time replacement and I did hire a retired principal, Ms. Sharon Gay, to fill in at Oakhurst. And if you haven't met her yet, she is very reminiscent, you will think Mary Mack the first time you meet her. And she is fitting right in with our Oakhurst Owls. We are in the initial stages of hiring, of the hiring process for the principal at Oakhurst. The position's been posted. We've got a good group of highly qualified candidates already sitting in the pool. We'll be scheduling input sessions with the staff and the Oakhurst community in the coming weeks and my plan is to hopefully have a full-time principal hired October 1st, if not sooner. Just wanted to also quickly share an update on our strategic planning time along with our Engage, Energize, and Empower initiative. So I'm so excited to roll my sleeves up and really engage with our community, the board, staff, and students to build CSD's new strategic plan. This is an opportunity to engage, energize, and empower all of our stakeholder groups to come together and set our course for the next five years. I think one thing that we have learned through COVID pandemic is that CSD can be nimble, responsive, and innovative. Our first community engagement meeting will be September 6th at 6:30 PM at Beacon Hill Middle School. This meeting is open to all staff, students, parents, and community members. This will be one of the, this will be the main input meeting to gather stakeholder input to share their vision for what CSD can become in the next five years, including what we can do to make sure we are addressing climate change and innovative practices, so we encourage all to come. Then on October 25th, and if we need the date of October 27th, a smaller group of stake- full day and if we need it to, to set the big goals for the school district to achieve. Followed by that, we will break out into smaller working groups for our CSD staff so that we can achieve the, all the goals that have been set forth by the community. In February and March, the action teams will share their final action plans with the board for the charter renewal and our strategic plan and hopefully the subsequent board meetings after those presentations, we will have those approved and ready to go. Another huge initiative underway this year is the rewriting, rewriting of the CSD Board Policy Manual. So several years ago, the board adopted a policy manual that uses a very different governance framework called the Carver Model. Well, the Carver Model is in itself not bad, it doesn't- that this board wants to follow. This means that over the course of this school year, the board will review and adopt an entirely new policy manual. I am thrilled to be collaborating with GSA on this project as they have a great deal of expertise and resources to make sure that our policies are aligned with state regulations and the law. Last month, the board adopted our first, the first of our new policies and later in this agenda, we will review and discuss several more policies. After the board has had an opportunity to review and discuss these policies that have been drafted by GSA, we will update the policies based on that input from the board as well as share the policies with the public for review. And then I also will review all of our proposed policies with CSD's legal team. And once the policies are finalized, we will be updating our policy manual with the new policies and sunset the old policies. I'll be keeping track of all the policy updates on a crosswalk that we will be posting on the webpage so parents have one easy place to look for all the new updates and changes and when things have been sunsetted. And I'm looking forward to completing this process through the collaboration with the board and the community. As Eber Kennedy, Kennedy X points out, the power to dismantle racism lies with the policymakers. And I have the full confidence that this board will adopt anti-racist policies so CSD will be a school system that disrupts the pattern of inequity for our students of color. And that are all my comments for this evening. Any questions or follow-ups from the board?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Furman. Now I'll move on to the chair comments. Welcome back again to all CSD students, teachers, and staff. We hope that you had a fun and relaxing summer. The board is excited to have everyone back in the buildings and we are looking forward to a great school year. I had a great time attending CSD's opening day festivities on July 28th. The energy of CSD staff is just incredible. Congratulations again to Claremont Elementary on winning the Spirit Stick for their incomparable display of school spirit. All schools should be so lucky to have a leader who can surf and flag like Dr. Curtis Armstrong. He was amazing. During the opening day celebration, the extra mile award was given to eight outstanding employees who were nominated by students. Congratulations to Labria Pearson, bus driver, Greg Prather, Fifth Avenue nurse, Beth Lewis, DHS teacher, Shonda Moore, school health coordinator, Debbie Lester, Oakhurst teacher, Kelly Nichols, Tally Street teacher, and Sarah Talton Buck, Beacon Hill Assistant Principal, and Candace Jones Boynton, College Heights teacher. Congratulations to everyone. Every year at the start of the school year, we recognize our employees for their hard work and dedication to CSD. Employees receive years of service or anniversary pins at the annual opening day celebration for five years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years, and beyond. I want to give a special shout out to our employees that were recognized for thirty years of service at CSD. This is a tremendous achievement and we are so grateful for their service. So the employees who received honors for thirty years of service are Anthony Colbert, Stacy Jones, Anita Robinson, Charles Starr, Clarence Strickland, and Pamela White. So we thank them for their service. On July 27th, Board Member Jane Perndon and I met with Dr. Sam King from the Georgia School Board Association and CSD's Courtney Burnett, who is serving as the liaison between GSA and CSD during the superintendent search process. We met to discuss dates and a format for the community engagement sessions that the board will host as part of the search process. The community engagement sessions will be held on September 14th and September 28th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. More information will be shared with the community in the board's newsletter this Thursday. Please be mindful, as Dr. Furman just mentioned, that in September, we will also host community engagement sessions on the development of the new strategic plan. So make sure you check your notices and your calendars to make sure that you have your dates and you're attending the sessions that you want to attend. And we encourage everyone to participate in the strategic plan community engagement session as well as the superintendent search session. The board and CSD administration has received a number of questions regarding its recently adopted procedure for complaints that certain divisive concepts are being taught in city schools of Decatur. With the help of our legal counsel, Wilson Morton &amp; Downs, we have written the following statement that will also be included in Thursday's board newsletter. CSD continues to be committed to its racial equity initiative and will continue to teach about diversity, equity, and inclusion. CSD was required to adopt this policy and create new procedures by new state law that went into effect on July 1st, 2022. The new divisive concept law prohibits all public schools from teaching or providing training on non-specific divisive concepts about race. The new law also requires schools to adopt a procedure for addressing complaints alleging that a school has violated the law. As a charter school system, CSD is entitled to waive certain state education requirements, but the new divisive concept law specifically prohibits charter systems from waiving these requirements. For further information, the new divisive con, divisive- OCGA 2111. In city schools of Decatur, our vision is to build the foundation for all children to be their best, achieve their dreams, and make the world a better place. In CSD, we believe that this is achieved through our commitment to and our unwavering support of CSD's equity work. We embrace the critical examination of current and historical events in a way that honors and gives a voice to those who have been silenced and/or marginalized. CSD has always been a district that supports our teaching staff as high-quality professionals and we will continue to do so, do this even more so now. Also, in accordance with the new regulation, CSD was required to change its policy requiring concerning transgender athletes. The Georgia High School Association, which governs Georgia's high school athletics, has now changed its rules in response to a new state law to state that a student's gender is determined by the gender noted on the student's birth certificate. For more information, please see Georgia High School Association Bylaw 1.47. CSD remains committed to addressing the needs of students who are transgender or gender diverse. Over the summer, as we heard recently, early in the meeting, Ms. Black, Chef Fowler, and Ms. Shelkoff had the pleasure of taking three DHS students to the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in sunny San Diego, California. We got to see Maeve Galentine in her construction, competed in the fashion construction and won a silver medal. She also received a new sewing machine, as she stated. Alicia Jones volunteered her time to assist in evaluating the early childhood education competition. Kira Johnson participated in all the leadership training sessions. We are so proud of these students. Way to go Bulldogs. The board is thrilled to have students walk in the halls of our newly named Beacon Hill Middle School. We look forward to watching the many ways that the students matriculating through Beacon Hill carry on the rich legacy of Beacon, of the Beacon Hill community. Speaking of Beacon Hill, I would like to congratulate the Beacon Hill Center Bass Base Chorus and the Decatur High Advanced Trouble Chorus. They were two of only eight middle and high school ensembles selected by competitive audition to be featured performers at the Georgia Music Educators Association End Service Conference in January 2023. This is a tremendous honor for these amazingly talented students. It is also another shining example why Decatur received the Best Communities for Music Education Award from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation last spring. Congratulations again to those students and their teachers. And finally, I want to encourage the CSD community to join us regularly for our monthly board meetings. The board will have a lot of things going on this year and attending the board meetings in person or virtually is a great way to stay informed. If there's any information that is shared during the meetings that you don't understand, please don't hesitate to email Dr. Furman for clarification and more information. Thank you and again, just wishing everyone a great start to the school year. That ends my chair's comments. We will now move on to the consent agenda items, which include personnel report, school nutrition, financial reports, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Decatur and the city schools of Decatur to build the track at Legacy Park. May I have a motion to approve the consent items one through four?
I'm going to approve consent agenda items one through four.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say. The consent agenda items one through four are approved. We now move on to our discussion items for this evening and we have four discussion items. Dr. Furman, will you please introduce our presenters this evening?
Yes, our first presenter for, for questions, if the board had questions about safety and security updates, is Mr. Sergio Perez. So the board received an overview of those and if there are any questions or comments about those, this is the opportunity. Sergio, did you have anything you wanted to share? Come on, Sergio. He likes teaching to us. I just want to highlight that they worked diligently over the summer to make sure that safety and security measures updated and enhanced over the summer. And Sergio, along with Matthew D'Amico, have done a great job making sure that we are keeping our students safe. That is a top priority for us. And one of the great things is, this is actually kind of funny, I was at Oakhurst and they were doing an active shooter drill and I was coming out of a meeting and getting ready to walk out and I was, I stopped and I was like, oh, I'm not going to go down that hallway. And the police officer goes, no, you can, you can walk out. So I start walking down the hallway and they have their, you know, fake guns, they're orange, but they're like, threat, threat, threat. I was like, oh my gosh. It was interesting, but they, I appreciate that they're doing that, they're getting to know the outline, you know, the, the footprints of the schools, the layout of the schools. So if there is any type of dangerous situation, they're ready to respond.
Any questions? No.
All right. Next up, Dr. Lily Huddleston provided the board with an update on the Code of Conduct as well as, it does some changes on that. And then there is also some information about BARK, which is a way for us to do threat assessment through artificial intelligence. And if the board has any questions or comments, Dr. Huddleston is here.
I just wanted to thank us for considering and using the BARK program. I use it in my home. It's a fantastic program that tracks social media that the kids may be on and it's really great at identifying if there's any kind of issue and elevating it to someone that can potentially intervene or help. So I'm, I'm excited to see how that rolls out and how that, how that program gets adopted in the system.
Now I want to thank Dr. Huddleston and Mr. Rodney Thomas for their community engagement with updates to the Code of Conduct, really taking the input from the community, the students, the parents, the staff, as they make those revisions going forward. And also huge shout out to Mary Banks, who has helped us immensely with our restorative practices training as well as a suspension prevention program at the high school and middle school.
Okay.
All right, so there's two more items. So we did move the budget to discussion, so I did want to share some information, particularly the reason why we moved this to discussion from where it was. So let me see, I'm gonna. So I wanted to talk about, first, usually like where we were, where we are, where we're going, but I wanted to kind of just make sure I shared with the board and the community kind of where we are right now and what led us to move that budget amendment into discussion instead of action. So we've been digging deeper into the budget, you know, just been looking at the numbers, trying to make sense of them and got up to a point where Ms. Broome, our chief financial officer, and I were like, this really is not making sense to us. So we did a deeper dive into the budget and what we identified was, is that the budgeting program, the financial software program that we are using has some kind of programming error and it is double counting staff. So it overinflated our budget numbers, counting additional staff that are not, shouldn't be counted in our, in our, in our budget. We got on the phone with the, with the system administrator, we walked through, you know, the process and she as well was baffled why those numbers were still impacting our current budget when they should not be. So we pulled the budget amendment because we really want to go ahead and dig deeper into that and make sure that we've got that correct in the budgeting system so we know exactly where we stand. So we pulled that, we just need a longer runway to really look into that. I think it will impact the budget in a positive way, meaning I think where our overall budget is will, will go down, which is, is huge. So as we identify those errors, but also wanting to look at, are there other places for if we need to make a budget amendment that we can find places to pull some of those monies out of different places? And one that I think Board Member Han shared is really talking about prorating our staff. So we, if we post a job and we hire a person, we have in the past always said, we're going to budget a full year salary for that staff member. Well, let's say that staff member only ends up working, let's say nine months because of when the job is posted and that staff member is hired, we don't need to budget a full amount. So looking at those opportunities to find some extra funds where we can kind of pull that back into the regular budget instead of trying to allocate a full salary. But also wanted to talk about where we've been and I'm sharing just a quick, I'll share this quickly, this will get posted on our webpage because one of the, the things that I think is helpful is for there to be just a quick one-page document for, for people to see our previous budgets, our current budgets, any amendments that are out there and what that looks like. So Ms. Broome and I have kind of compiled some information here and we pulled from our audits for the past five years and have presented this information here directly from our audits and we will put the data source up at the top so people know where we're getting that information. So you'll see several lines here, we look at the initial budget that was presented, then we'll look at the, that's initial revenue, initial expenses, also want to look at percent change in the budget. And one of the things you can see as we were dealing with COVID, we did have some significant increases, this is, sorry, it's really small on these screens, but this will be public access for people to look at. Also putting in there the final budget, we know that as we go through the budgeting season, as we're implementing our budget, we time to time have to make amendments and then taking a look at, so what did we actually bring in? Um and then taking a look at, so what did we actually bring in as revenue? What were our actual expenditures, expenditures? And then also giving some information about the difference between that, the carryover fund. So what did we end up not spending? Um and then some information here about our fund balance, the millage rate and enrollment and also per pupil cost. So wanting to make sure that we just have very transparent information in an easy-to-access location for all stakeholders um in the district. So as I said, kind of where we were, um looking at a trajectory, we had been spending about eleven thousand dollars per student um to educate our students. And then COVID hits and that jumped up significantly to thirteen thousand dollars per student and fourteen, almost fif- almost fourteen and a half thousand dollars per student um over twenty twenty, over two thousand twenty twenty and two thousand twenty twenty-one budgets uh to the point of adding significant amount of staff. And that's the last piece that we'll add to this report, or the number of staff that we have employed during a school year, someone that has been on the on the books for us. Um so that is kind of where we were um for COVID. So then talk about where we are and where we're going. Um so this, I also put in here, um this was during COVID, we had an initial budget presentation. And as I started digging through and really examining, there was for two thousand twenty twenty-two and twenty-one, there were lots of different numbers everywhere. That's why I felt it was important to put where we're getting that information. Um so the initial budget that was presented to the board for twenty twenty um was looking at an overall operating budget of about eighty-five million dollars and um looking at raising the millage rate to twenty-two point two five. Um and that's when I came on and transitioned to the superintendent role. And one of the priorities that I talked about with the board was getting a handle on that millage rate so that it wasn't so extraordinarily high. During this year, what we ended up doing was transitioning several positions that were being paid out of CARES funds into um or being paid out of the general fund that we could pay out of CARES funds. So we took about two point three million dollars of salary, paid for it out of CARES funds, and we knew that that was going to expire at the end of twenty twenty um and that we would have to encumber that as we moved into the budget for this year. Um so I provided with a very detailed overview here of what our initial budgets were, all the amendments. And down at the bottom, and sorry, this is really false, um here, but you can zoom in on it, is the explanation for the budget amendment so that you know why we amended the budget, what those values are. Um and if it was cool, if some of the data was pulled from financial um financial reports, that data is in there as well. Uh but one thing that we did look at is our ending um actual revenues. So we did earn um about eighty-one point um seven million dollars um in twenty twenty for that budget. We spent eighty point nine right now, so we have um unspent funds of about three quarters of a million dollars, um which does put our per pupil spending at fourteen thousand dollars three hundred, which is just slightly lower than where we were the previous year. Uh but I am eager to look at how we can further control that um dollar amount. So then as we look at where we're going for two thousand twenty twenty-three, um our current operating budget, as I mentioned, we pulled that amendment because I do feel like there is some information we need to clarify through that budgeting software so that we can really have a really detailed look and understanding of what those numbers are for our salaries and benefits. Uh but then also I will continue to track this information, share this with the board as well as with the um with all of our stakeholders as we go forward. Um and just want to let people know, I am committed to making sure that we are operating a fiscally responsible budget. Um and I'm looking forward to hearing from the board on what their thoughts are on how we can enhance that effort. And then I'm also very strategic planning process because that will finally give the school district really good direction on what are the things we need to be funding? How do we need to gauge what we're spending on what? Um because we've really been kind of, what, well, I feel I've been trying to develop a budget to budget instead of a long-term budget. So I feel like this strategic process will help us identify some of those core initiatives and things that we want to accomplish as a school district to really enact a very fiscally responsible budget. So with that, I'm going to just allow the board to comment, questions, um. Bingo.
So um I want to first start by just thanking the administration for pulling the amendment and so we're not voting on it tonight. Uh I do believe it's a step in the right direction. Um I've been very vocal about my concerns uh with recent budget increases. Um and despite what we had heard earlier, uh even according to some of the numbers that were up here right here, in twenty nineteen, our budget was in fact seventy-two million dollars. This year's budget would make it seventeen million dollars had we approved the amendment today, uh seventeen million dollar increase since twenty nineteen. So in fairness, I need to acknowledge that COVID is exceptionally disruptive. It's a bomb detonating in the middle of a budget. And it isn't possible to be efficient when you're worried about saving lives and continuing to deliver quality in a virtual environment without any roadmap or any path for how to get there. It is the reason why, in fact, in all of my criticisms, I have looked at twenty nineteen numbers and not twenty twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two numbers because those numbers are going to be all over the map. That is the nature of what it means to try to respond to a crisis. A lot of the increased expenses that happened over COVID, though, were in emergency response to COVID. Those are by nature one-time or temporary expenses. We're now eighteen months really past kind of the peak part of the crisis. And I do firmly believe it's time for us to start going into the budget and identifying some of those one-time increases and pulling them out of the budget to drive a little bit more efficiency. I was concerned about some of the numbers in the justification and timeline that was shared with us to the administration and I do believe that's what thankfully led to the little bit of a deeper look into the into um the budget and the decisions to um pause for just a second before we do any kind of increase. I want to emphasize that it's it's not, while the financial software issues are correct, it's not just financial software. I think there are plenty of other opportunities in the budget to pull out more expenses. And I say this not as a parent or as a layperson. I say this as someone who has built far more complex and difficult budgets than this professionally for a living. I have uh every confidence that we'll be able to meet our objectives with this budget without an increase. Uh in fact, I firmly believe that we can actually meet those objectives and still find a decrease, much like the city of Decatur did this year. If we want to be able to invest in things like expanded dyslexia programming, if we want to find increased dollars for teacher salaries, if we want to invest in climate resiliency, carbon reduction, or any other significant program as a part of our strategy going forward, we have to start with taking the things out of the budget that should be in there in the first place. The inefficiencies that are locking up tax dollars that are not being used. Our budget last year was four point two million dollars more than we needed. That is approximately three hundred dollars per taxpayer on the average home in Decatur that we took in and did not use. So I am firmly confident that working together will be able to pull those dollars back out and put an efficient budget together. And I really look forward to working with the administration to accomplish that over this year.
Thank you.
Dr. Furman, I just uh uh a couple of questions. With pulling this amendment, the 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 nature of it was, well, a cou- to back up a couple of months or a couple of goals, some of the reason that, or one of our goals back before we adopted the mill rate was to increase the fund balance. So every school board meeting, uh Ms. Broome would show us that very distressing graph that shows how the fund balance was almost non-existent. So one of our goals here was to get the fund balance back up. So I think that that is is a point worth making. So one of the goals here in terms of how we organized the mill rate was to get the fund balance back up. So in trying to reorganize our staffing model, by reorganizing your staffing model, we were trying to get the fund balance back up. So by not voting on this amendment today, how can you achieve that goal in some form or fashion? But to be sure that the teachers that are still working are still able to get their paychecks on time.
Yeah, um good. That's a great question. So we've got enough operating budget to, that I feel comfortable with. So the amended um, the fund balance is sitting right now, I think, lending at about ten million. It was about ten million dollars, which is great. Uh we would like to see it a little bit higher to get us closer to that ten or twelve percent. I think it's a little over ten percent right now. Uh but we want to keep it at that rate. Um but the reason why I felt comfortable pulling the amendment is because I'm confident those teachers' salaries are already in the budget. If not all of them, probably ninety-nine percent of them. So the, when we looked at that, it's counting extra staff as we looked at the actual numbers. We're looking at, here's what's in our budget prep, but in the ledger line, it's less. It's more what it should be. So I'm confident, I would not make a move that was going to endanger a teacher's paycheck. So a hundred percent confident that they paycheck and we are still pay them for the whole year.
So I think that's a a point that we need to clarify and emphasize was that even by not passing this amendment or by delaying it, the money that is already, that the teachers already need is still built into the budget.
Yep.
Right? Um and that one of, and I think it's also the case, I think it was written in one of the public comments there, that there is a lot of rumor around about how these numbers came to be. So I think we should encourage community members to listen to the recordings from this school board meeting, from a lot of the school board meetings from the springtime with the budgetary hearings where all of the numbers were presented. Um and so that we can be clear about what what numbers are rolling over, what the fund balance is. So for clarification, can you tell us what you estimate the rollover will be and then what the fund balance will be? Because those are two different numbers.
Yeah, they are.
Sometimes those get get confused.
Yeah, let me read, let me pull this up and I will give you those exact numbers right now. So for our current budget, um from twenty twenty-two, um we um having, we're, we had unspent funds of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in between revenue and actual expenditures. That is, we're rolling that into the fund balance. Um there is a difference, as um board member was mentioning, a four million dollar difference between what we budgeted and what we actually use. So that is the big discrepancy of why did we up the uh budget to that eighty-five million when we probably didn't need to? Because, and I know we didn't need to because we only spent eighty points, um probably eighty-one million dollars. So that is the, you know, looking at that budgeting process and how do we make sure that doesn't happen again, that our budget we're projecting is what we actually need.
And I think that, and my last question is, do we have some idea as to where that rollover came from? Or could you explain to community folks as to where that rollover came from? When you close out the budget at the end of the year, you may see a surplus. And I think we've maybe discussed it, or at least in my mind, I'm thinking that when you close out the budget, you realize that there were surpluses somewhere and, you know, but maybe, maybe we need to clarify where that rollover came from.
And it is in, it's actually in, it's nice that this is in the financial reports, it's in the board agenda, the board packet for this meeting. So the board agenda, the financial statements that are in the packet for Ju- June, they're from June, but they're in this, but in this packet. I always get confused on the June, like two months later. Um it tells you exactly because the June report is the closeout of the twenty-two uh budget. So it tells you very detailed how, which budget, and it's line by line, who didn't, like, where did we overspend? Where did we underspend? Most of the overage is coming that we, you know, the rollover is from unspent salaries and benefits.
Okay, because if we do continue to have an overage, we we should consider rolling back that mill rate. That's what we should do going into the next budgetary cycle. That should be in the forefront of our mind. But there were some other things that we talked about, increasing the fund balance, investing in raising teacher salaries or giving teacher bonus. Those are all things that we know the over in our mind. But I think, I think that the rollover was something that we talked, that we, that we found out about or discussed as in the late spring to early summer, in the early summertime. So if that's where, if that's in an easy accessible place, then we want to make sure that taxpayers should find that.
If possible, I'd like to 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 quickly clarify that that it doesn't actually require us to wait until next budget cycle. If we actually are able to find excess funds within this budget, we have that, I forget where it was, Dr. Furman, maybe it was twenty twenty, I can't remember the exact year that you showed it, but we actually do have a point where we actually in mid-year reduced the budget, which results in funds going back out. So I I think that there's the opportunity, if we are, if we do buckle down and tighten down on this particular budget and identify where some of that four point two million dollars is, I don't, I I would encourage us to consider in year what we want to do with it. We don't necessarily have to wait until the next budget.
And Dr. Furman, can you um go into a little more detail when you were just talking about the cost per student? Um and more specifically, why um why our cost per student is a little bit higher? I know we we spoke a little bit about the elementary school and um what we offer as a district for our elementary school students that other districts do not. And so just wanted you to maybe elaborate on that just a little to give um some some um context to why our um per child is is what it is.
Um that, of course, and it don't have any numbers right in front of me, so this is going to be kind of general and kind of give people an idea. Um but our el- our lower elementary schools are quite small. Um there is a desire to have uh schools within our communities where kids can walk to school, have that um community school feel. Um that being said, our schools are small. We have three schools that are sitting around a hundred and hundred and sixty students. Um when you have schools of that size, you have a school nurse, you have a school counselor, you have, you know, all the things that come with a school. And instead of, as the bigger districts put those together into, you know, one big elementary school, we've got them spread out amongst five schools. So five principals instead of one, five school nurses instead of one, five media specialists. So that is an opportu- that is one of the reasons that we have higher costs per student because we have more personnel per student, particularly at the lower elementary level. The other mitigating factor there for trying to decrease costs is there's this tipping point that we found as we were trying to implement the new staffing model, particularly at these lower schools where we allotted the school two teachers in a grade level. Well, that created class sizes of twenty-eight. Well, if we then gave them three teachers in the grade level, their class sizes were like sixteen. So it it's like how, like, where's our comfort level with class size that then we will say, we'll go ahead and pay for another teacher to be in this building to keep the class size down? When they're smaller, there's a, it's a pretty drastic change between two and three teachers. So some of those reasons make our lower elementary schools a little bit more, um I would say, expensive to staff because we're staffing that. Uh also prob- um looking at our special teachers, we have um um P E, art, Spanish and music teachers. We can split those as much as possible between two schools if necessary. But then when you're trying to split all the teachers amongst all the schools, it becomes a a very difficult to work the schedules out. So we were not able to do that, as I shared last month with Westchester. We thought we'd be able to split the teacher, but then we were like, there's just no way we could work that schedule out um for that one, so we had to add that cost back into the budget. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm going to start off by saying Hans said COVID was a bomb in the middle of a budget. Um I've never seen anything quite like it over the last two years. Helping people where the state said, we're not giving you money, we told in the middle of a need to hire staff to deal with what was many are predicting will be a generational level of learning loss. I'm, to anyone who is dumb enough to sit still to listen to me learn, there are so many problems with the way education is funded in this state. The Q V E, not providing a nurse at all at the lower level, not providing mental health for more than one to five hundred. Um stu- teacher Teachers being paid next to nothing, teachers per classroom being 1 to 30. Not providing any sort of dyslexia identificates, not even on the mental health stuff. So you have to fail to get, there's so many places where we have to provide funding to step in and then the state comes in and says, you don't get that money. And then we don't find out until April of this year that some of that money is coming back with a raise for the QBE level of teachers and local communities. And so I appreciated the chart that you shared, Dr. Furman, that said, yes, the cater funds have gone up. It is inarguable that they have gone up exponentially across the state. They had to have, they have, they will continue to do so until we do something about that state level. I also just want to say that I appreciate you being open and willingness. I don't want people to think that the board is silent on like, let's make the budget better. That has not been our position, that has not been your position. Whether it's finding money floating around because of poor software, which, a point I want to clarify, and correct me if I'm wrong, that is why the gap between what we have said we will spend and we will spend every year, one of many, has been hard, which makes it difficult to plan, difficult to appreciate what 12 to 15. The state requires us, despite not funding it, to keep a certain amount of surplus to maintain our system. And yet they won't fund it. And then, and then we have to steal, you know, I was accused of being a thief via email this week, people's money to fund our children and our schools. And that's not our intention. No one here wants anything, except for the children who we represent that have the most quality education they possibly can. And the last thing I want to say is, it's part of the superintendent's requirements to look for efficiencies in the budget, to continue to go down. And where there are increases today to be justifiable, mental health, more pay for teachers, equity, reading intervention, providing for teacher and learning training for kindergarteners. That part is good, that doesn't mean our job is done. And the only thing that pains me is the notion that we're not doing anything. We're not. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Furman, did the software company give any type of timeframe of when we can expect?
So Lenita had a follow-up call with them this afternoon. She and her team have to go back in and do some work. And then it's got to go back to their programmer to run some more tests and we'll go from there. I will tell you, I have never been a fan of this software program and I have given Lenita full rein to start looking for a new software program. It has been a pain for us to use for a long time. And it's time for us to, I think, part ways with that software system and find something that works for us.
Can I ask, do we have a sense of roughly how much of the issue the software system is accountable for? Is it like a million? Is it 4 million?
Lenita, do you have any idea? You showed me that earlier on that one chart. I think it's about at least 1.3 million.
1.3, so that by my calculation means there's probably another 2.9 still in there that we can go and look and identify. So, so I do appreciate it's a pain in the neck when the software doesn't work the way that we want, but that is definitely not the only contributing factor to the rollover.
All right, so we'll move on to our final discussion item tonight, which is a review of board policy. So we've got four policies that I've shared with the board for discussion this evening. Let's go ahead and tackle unstructured break time. So the board policy, and I also provided the board a copy of our current policies, which is an administrative regulation. And this board policy is very much a draft from GSBA, which they are trying to keep us as close to policy written by the state legislators as possible, which I fully agree with, but I think we need to make sure that particularly with unstructured break time, that we keep it within what we believe as city schools of Decatur. And I got quoted in Decatur today as being a fidgety person who needs to go out and take walks. So I am very much that kind of a person and need to get out there and stretch my legs and appreciate that most other people like to get up and move around as well. And I think our students definitely need that as well. So we do want to protect that time for our students and not let it be taken away. So within this policy, I'm just curious if the board has any questions? And then I've got a recommendation for what I think is an appropriate edit that we would make and then put out for public review.
I will share my top level thought, which I did versus email today, which is on all of these board policy things, but we're taking a recommendation from GSBA, from the state, where they say, this is our policy. And it is not as favorable to Decatur as we would like. Like, I much prefer our current AR to this one, and we are not necessarily considering taking this one. But that clarification kind of be included. Probably more than anything, because this is not an unstructured break time. I understand why GSBA wants us to discuss this. There's a recent law passed by the governor and the state legislature to take it. For many systems, this is an improvement on unstructured break time.
For sure.
For Decatur, it is a step backwards. And we all recognize that, that's fairly obvious. And so I'll shut up and listen to what the actual recommendation is. But that's kind of like a top level, how these things are disseminated to the public, maybe save some angst.
Yeah, and I was sorry that the public, you know, a lot of folks weren't informed about why we were discussing this. Because, you know, to, to think that, you know, break time can be taken away from a student because of, you know, academic or disciplinary actions is not the Decatur way and it's in conflict with, you know, TBIS. And so I'm anxious to hear your recommendations so that we can address some of those concerns that we've been hearing about over the past two days.
So my recommend, is, any other comments from the board? So my recommendation is that the first part is just very much, you know, some legal, I think the very last sentence, that breaks may be withheld from students for disciplinary or academic reasons if prior notice is given to such students. So I think we need to alter that last statement to say, refer to the CSD procedures if considering removing unstructured break time for a student. And then we attach our current administrative regulation as that refer to procedure.
So this last sentence will come out.
Yep.
So in effect, just so it's transparently clear to parents that may be listening, the new policy will have all of the same parameters that the current policy does around unstructured break time.
Yep.
Okay.
So then I think the next best policy to talk about would be policy development.
So the current policy, because I pulled this up, is principals will provide a minimum of 20 minutes per day at UBT on average for each student. So this policy on six through eight, the second paragraph, if you will, is, is, I think, new for Decatur.
Well, we did unstructured break time through sixth grade. Sixth grade was a little less than 20 minutes.
Okay.
But we did it at sixth grade as well.
Okay, so what will the, what are the changes then for that? Is it just, has it always been principal discretion and it will remain principal discretion? I know our policy includes a list of like, pretty extreme reasons why it would be taken away.
Correct.
Okay.
And is there language in there about timing or how much time they get at six, seventh, and eighth grade?
I thought there was, because I thought sixth grade had 10 minutes or 15 minutes. It was a little different.
Is there room for the principal to increase that if he so desired? Or does it have to stay? If we're, if we're attaching our policy to this, does it have to stay at 10 minutes for the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders?
No.
I guess what I'm saying is that if we have here that it's after discretion of the principal in one line and then we attach our
I see what you're saying, okay.
Would it have to stay at like 10 minutes? I know one criticism is that, you know, a sixth grader and a fifth grader still need some time.
Yes, yeah, and I know it's general practice, sorry.
Oh, no, you go ahead.
I was going to say, it's general practice for the sixth grade teens to take their kids out and give them some unstructured break time. That's kind of been a, if it's not, then it involves the, is the practice that's been going on there. And I don't think they were getting, they were ever going to think about taking that away.
No, I, I think, I think we've been clear that it was not, it was never our intent to take away at all. I just didn't know if the language is consistent between, it says here, which is for sixth through eighth grade, it's under discretion of the principal, and it also says that our policy is under discretion of the principal, both the timing and however much we can, it is the same both places. Am I being clear with my question?
No.
She's asking a better version of it. Which is, which is if this is inconsistent with something in our rule, we prefer our rule. Can we make sure that it's written somewhere to include all the hard work of 2018 before, before putting this forward?
Yes, of course.
So if we're going to let, if we're going to let the Beacon Hill Middle School principal decide that he wants to give the sixth graders 20 minutes, then we should, it should be the same. We should modify this language as well. Or we should modify our language so that he has that discretion to
Yes, to do the
Modify it.
Yes, you got it, yes. Okay. So let's look at the policy development. And I think this is an important one because this will really structure how we move policy development going forward as we approve additional policies. So the, the GSBA's basic, I mean, summary of this is that board policies can originate from anywhere, either an employee, a parent, a concerned individual that they could raise, hey, I think you need a policy about X. So we have to have procedures about how we will review policies. And that's the procedure piece, but we just need to say that we can bring, you know, look for a policy, take input about policy anywhere. That the superintendent is authorized to establish administrative processes that will enforce the policies. I recommend we keep that, but that we also review policies periodically. It's a pretty general practice for a policy revision to be kind of calendared out so that over the course of three or four years, you've looked at your policies at least once. Something we can, once we get the new policies adopted, that we will calendar that piece out. Then it asks that the minimum requirement from the law is that we post our tentative policy as a draft policy in a board meeting. And that at some, there's no time limit to when you would have your next policy, when the board would be able to adopt the policy. So I think what we need to make sure that this, that our board has this conversation about tonight is how much time do we want to provide our community for input and review of policies once the boards have an opportunity to review them? So I think, to me, a minimum would be two weeks, preferably would be like a whole cycle of meeting to meeting, regular meeting to regular meeting.
Yeah, I was thinking, which would be a little longer than two weeks.
A little, yeah, it's about a month.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
I, I think understanding this is actually important to the previous thing that we just discussed. The paragraph in this that starts with, except for policy actions to be taken on emergency, the vote shall not take place at a meeting until it's brought up. So when something shows up in information, maybe even just clarifying that, it's like, if something shows up in information, it means that someone, somewhere, in this case GSBA, has made a recommendation that we add to our agenda.
I think that's good clarification to add clarity.
Yeah, the board shall not vote on this. I mean, the point is discuss it. And then, then if you see something on an action item and you haven't heard it discussed, that's a red flag.
Right.
Point of clarification, would, would the board ourselves count as employees? When we say it may originate from employees, parents, or other concerned individuals, does that make us other concerned individuals?
You're the board and you can
So should we call out that the board can also reform policies? I just didn't see a place where the board is actually allowed to edit policy. Right, the first line, is the governing body that estab, oh, you're right. It just says we establish and implement, not that we can come up with ideas.
But to me, establish policies is that you would say, we're, we need to establish a policy on X.
I, it would make sense that in that second sentence saying, proposals regarding school system policy, the policy may originate from the board, employees, parents, or other concerned individuals.
Where, I'm sorry.
He said, so in this second sentence? That we add the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we want to do at least four weeks of public review, okay? Okay?
In all cases, proposed new or amended policy shall be submitted in writing to the superintendent or designate. Who would be the designate?
In this case, it would be Courtney. But typically, there is someone who, you know, the superintendent has like a policies person in bigger districts.
Okay, but, okay, so do we, do we put a title there or?
No, you can keep it in general, designate, because it could change year to year.
And is there a place on the website where some, where our community member could? Or would this, this is a simple email or phone call?
That's the email or phone call, fine.
Is there any reason why we would want to consider the board chair also as someone that could step over separation of eight? But if, if there's a reason why, it could also go through the board chair? I don't, I don't want to add work to you.
I'm happy to add that, and then again, this will go back through legal review. So if there's a reason that that can't be in there? Anything else with policy BD? Student attendance policy, this one is pretty much exactly the same as our current attendance policy. The addition to this one was a new law passed by the legislator to add 4H activities as an excused absence. So my recommendation is that we don't make changes to the attendance policy, that we post this for public input and then vet this with our legal team and then put it out for board approval at the next meeting, pending any possible changes. Okay, and then the last one is very similar to the divisive concept one we approved last time, which is basically just a mirror of what was in the, in the law that we are, I would recommend we adopt this policy and accompany it with procedures to clarify the processes for some of the ways that does, parents in the community could bring forth their concerns.
But does it be different than the procedures for divisive concepts?
It's different timelines. So we've got to make sure we align it with the timelines that are set in each of these. And we will get these edits out there, we'll post these for public review, and we will see these in an upcoming agenda for the board to review one more time and at that time vote for approval. And that concludes discussion items.
All right, we have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, training, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about the future dates for the work of the board? All right, thank you all for joining us this evening. This meeting is adjourned at 8:19 PM.